All right, excellent. So we've already said the fudge allegiance. And I think we're ready to start. So. Changes to the agenda. Lisa, did you have some changes?
Yes, I'd like to make changes to add the four waivers to our consent agenda.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I would like to make changes to add the four new facilities waivers. From, they look like they are all from the rec department. Ringe, let me just check. One is for, okay, the Lions and Tigers den meetings for Cub Scouts happening at Jaffrey Grade School. The youth basketball open gym. That's through Ringe Memorial School. Youth basketball tryouts, Ringe Memorial School. And youth basketball open gym through Ringe Memorial School. And these are all going through October and November.
And I have a change as well. I'd like to remove the minutes for September 18th and 25th.
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Kim. All right, so we have those changes to the agenda. And. Okay, so. Mr. Iker was saying these items have all been added to the consent agenda. So after the superintendent's report, we'll have the consent agenda and we will have discussion of the consent agenda. So we can go over these items. Okay, very good. Thank you. I think we're ready for public comments.
What?
I said, can I go through my spiel real quick? All right, um, let me just fix this real quick. Okay, so if you want to make a public comment, there's different ways to do so based on whether you are an in-person audience or you are a at-home audience. If you're at home, please use the hand raise feature. You can find that at the bottom of whatever screen you're using, first name, last name, town of residence before making any sort of public comment. If you are in person, you are able to wave your hand and you can grab this microphone that I have right here. It's wireless. Again, make sure you speak into the microphone, first name, last name, town of residence, and we will record your comment that way.
Yeah.
Okay. Leslie McLean Ridge, ah Ridge, Leslie McLean Jaffrey, I know where I live freely. I found the discussion at the last board meeting regarding policy DJH Entertainment Catering and Venue Rental upsetting. The discussions seem detached from real life experiences in the SAU and the schools and out of step with normal business practices in most of sectors of the economy. In other sectors, when an employee has to attend an event during their mealtime, they are fed. These are considered business meals. They qualify for tax deductions and are a normal cost of doing business. If an employee is traveling away from their traditional office space, meals are also either provided or reimbursed. If an employee, if employees are attending an event which includes a meal, the event is designed as an appreciation or a recognition for these employees, meals are provided. If all the standard business processes, I'm sorry, these are all standard business processes outside of the school district. We are just like every other organization, we have these types of events. That is not to say staff expect to be fed all the time or that any meeting includes food. But we must treat the staff as professionals. Each principal, director, and superintendent should have a modest funded budget line for this type of expense. This cannot be done without a funded budget line. Allowing the idea of the expenses without a funded budget line creates transfers from other sources which co-ops the original intent of the budget. And please understand there are a lot of potluck meals happening at the school and in the SAU. Holiday celebrations, general socialization, socialization time, morale building, and much of the team building is fueled by potluck meals. And I want to talk about swag for one minute. In other organizations, employees are given swag to build pride, express appreciation, and to publicize the organization. Swag can be simple and cheap, like logo stickers to put on your laptop or water bottle. Swag can be purposeful, like logo insulated water bottles to help us move away from any plastics. Swags can be rewarding, like a logoed fleece jacket for meeting certain goals. Employees are also encouraged to buy swag. And if this is an option, often employees are given an allowance to spend at the logoed store. Most employees buy more than their allowance, thus helping the school. I have sweatshirts, jackets, bottles, phone holders, et cetera, from my various employers. I wear or anytime I wear or use any of these things, other people ask me questions about the company they're from. Swag serves a purpose and it's a common acceptable business practice. In this very tight employment market, it is important to be competitive to increase employee retention. I believe everyone employed in the SAU could move into the private sector and make more money. And while I'm a not expert in education salaries, I believe most educators willing to drive about fifteen minutes past our schools to Massachusetts could make more money even staying in the education field. We must at least match the established baseline that other organizations provide. Thank you.
And June, or do you have any other?
Nope, everybody else just said no.
Okay, very good. So then we're, we're gonna move on then to the superintendent's report.
Well, thank you. So this week, on October 5th, we are having a community event that is sponsored by our school district as well as the Minnetonka United Way Region One, which is focused on early childhood. Although early childhood used to be really considered birth through five, we are all, this is focused on birth through eight. Everyone here is invited, if you would like to take part in that. Everyone who sends their children to schools has been invited. We have had a staggered invite. We first of all, sent invitations to about seventy-five organizations over the last couple of weeks to see if we could get a good cluster of individuals from various counseling organizations, early childhood organizations, hospitals, et cetera, anyone who is working with children. And so this is part of the grant funding that we received for community schools funding. And Susan Shaw Sarles, who has retired from principal of Jaffrey Grade School, she is the grant or the, the community schools coordinator for this opportunities that, this opportunity, the set up opportunities that we have. It will be co-facilitated by an individual from the Minnetonka United Way and the school district. And so Ellen from MUW will be there. And she is, that's what she does. She goes around different organizations and does this early childhood facilitation, among other things. So that's exciting. Right in line with that is just our little Oriole Center that we have. We continue to have, see that grow. A learner, another learner came into that center today. We are now able to employ not, you know, full-time by any means and very part-time. We are now employing a couple of high school learners who have gone through the CONVAL ATC, sorry, CTE programming and have, you know, are CPR certified and things of that nature. So they'll be able to help us for substitution and also to gain some practical experience and possibly credit as well. We are still, that was another step that we took. The next step is now to look for people who want to do ELOs unpaid projects that are going on. We continue to meet with the staff that is in that to build curriculum. We will have a professional, our first professional development day, we'll call it. It's not named that, but on the ninth of October, when we have that day offer, the, the school district, well, the schools anyway, the district employees at the SAU level will still be there. We'll be able to continue to further plan. And we've been identifying more of the items that we need for that, that environment to be successful. And we also know that we continue to have, thankfully, we have, we continue to have future learners who are going to go to the Little Oriole Center. Either they have been born recently or they are scheduled to be in the months to come. So we're really excited to see our Jaffrey Ringe community and family grow here. And we really take pride in being able to take care of one another and to help each other come alongside to raise kids. As we know, it's a community effort, just as much it is the individual families themselves responsible for their children's wellbeing. We started negotiations last month with the JREA. We continued that today. So earlier today, we had our second meeting, but probably the meeting that had the, you know, most robust discussion out of the two. And so that will continue on. Our next meeting is later on in October. And we'll be having conversations with the board in non-meetings relative to the items that were presented. Route 202, we haven't met for a little while, but it's also because we've, or it's been mainly because we've been trying to get good information and not just having a meeting for meeting sake. So we will be scheduling the Route 202 Committee again with some information. That information is in part having to do with the CTE programming and the information that we've just received this past Friday from the state Department of Education. We had a meeting here in Jaffrey or at the middle school, high school. And we also are starting to have conversations and work is being done with the organization that we are working with regarding the athletic facilities, the fields and so forth. So that's all within the same conversation. And so we'll bring that information to the committee. The Friday conversation that we did have, it was mostly with the administration, but also Chris Ratcliffe, he were able to be there. And so I think it was a good meeting that we had with the Department of Education, Jeff Beard. And I, the name of the other individual is escaping me right now, but they were able to provide some clarity. Basically, letting us know that we're on track, that the timeframe that we are thinking is correct is, is right, that we don't have to have everything perfect for this January, although we do have to be very explicit with what we want. And the ideas have to be, you know, well-developed. There are some other things that we learned relative to the way that this whole funding process has been set up, that we will have to pay attention to. We may have to discuss with our attorneys later on about that as we go down the road, as we should continue to go down the road focusing on this. But there, it was brought to our attention that our Region 14 is mentioned within the the ladder of getting the funding, but in parentheses or attached to that, the town of Peterborough is mentioned. So Jaffrey and New Whip switch are not mentioned within that. So something that we have to pay attention, even though we're all part of Region 14, and I'm sure there's a, you know, we, there's, there's conversation that has to take place relative to that. So it was good to get that told to us to our face and when to have a really nice discussion about that. And so that's what I'll say about that right now, and we'll update the board as we get more information. Leslie and I were able to go to, on a field trip last Thursday. So I'll end on this fun note. We went on a field trip. We went on a field trip to Manchester. We won't talk about the organization at this point in time that we went to. It was a higher education location. And we were able to look at furniture. Lots of furniture, school or business type of furniture. Storage units, things of that nature. When I say storage units, I mean like something that would be in an office or a classroom, not storage units as in what we would put outside. So we are in conversations right now about how we can acquire that for, you know, possibly for in a donation type of format for our school system. And so we'll update you on that. My hope is that we will have something to bring forward to the board at our next board meeting in a couple of weeks that you might be able to look at and possibly accept, but at least vote on. And we'll, with pictures and things of that nature. But we're working hard on that. And I had a conversation with Sandy this morning regarding our visit, showed her some pictures. And again, with the idea of improving our facility and with saving our money, our taxpayers' money by just partnering intelligently and finding the things that we need without having to expend our budget. Or at least not in a way that would, in a way that we are getting more of what we need for a lot less. And I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on any of this for the superintendent? Okay, well, thank you, Ruben. And it sounds like there's a lot going on as always. Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. And if we can get us get a motion in a second, then we'll have discussion that. Okay. Okay. So Charlie asked that the four waivers be removed from the consent agenda. And we'll put them as a separate item. Is that the request? Yeah. Okay.
The minute?
Yes, the, the minutes have also, it's okay. You're, you're allowed to sound loud.
I just didn't know because you said we'd talk about it later. I wasn't sure if I was supposed to repeat the minute thing.
Yeah, the minute, the minutes have been removed from the consent agenda. All right, so would anyone like to make a motion relative to the consent agenda? As amended. Thank you, Charlie.
I second.
And thank you, Kim. All right, so the consent agenda has been amended to remove the minutes and to remove the, remove the waivers and also to, do we add something else? No, I think that's all, correct? Okay, very good. Any discussion of the consent agenda? Other than, okay. Then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay. That passes seven zero zero. Nice to have all seven of us here. Okay, great. We have the minutes for September 18th and September 25th. Would someone like to make a motion?
I make the motion to approve the minutes for September 18th and 25th.
Okay.
Sorry. I think the minutes need to be separated so that, because there were different attendants. The 25th was a special meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. That's a good point. Daisy, would you like to amend that motion for that purpose?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for September 18th.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lisa. All those in favor of approving the minutes for September 18th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Okay, very good. So I think the count on that was six zero one. Am I correct? Okay. And now we need a motion for the minutes for September 25th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for September 25th.
Thank you, Daisy. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes for September 25th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Okay, so I believe our count on that one was five zero two. Okay. Very good. Thank you. No, Kim abstained from the first from September 18th and Kim and Charlie abstained from September 25th. Okay, so let's talk about the waivers.
I make a motion that we approve the waivers, all four.
I'll second.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Staying. Staying, yes. All right, so that was six zero one.
May I just make a comment? Yes. So just an update on MOU. I had sent emails to both town administrators. I had a meeting set up with Jaffrey one week. I did have to cancel that due to quasi-emergency situation that happened in the morning on that day. And so I will be rescheduling that because this past week wasn't, wasn't going to be, the individual wasn't going to be available during that timeframe anyway. And Ringe, I had sent an email and they did reply to me. And I did not see the reply on the confirmation. So I missed a meeting. And so we're in the process of trying to get that one rescheduled. I had to, however, I did have to explain afterwards why the MOU, why we would be meeting, because I don't think that it was understood, my assumption. I thought it was going to be understood because we had had so much conversation. But I don't think there, the reason for the MOU at the, at, at least at the town of Ringe was understood as to why we were meeting. So I will contact them and have more conversation about that.
Thank you for the update, Ruben. Okay, so now we are ready for action items. Multi-year plan.
I can speak to the multi-year plan. This is something that was adopted last year. This year, it is identical, except for the rating sheets toward the end. So the Goals Committee had gone through this and we had really gone over. During the summertime, the administrators had, from the elementary school, had gone through each item. And the administrators over at the secondary school had gone through this item. So you'll actually see that there are different rating scales or different rating outcomes for the elementary as than there are for the middle school, high school at times. Sometimes the ratings are very far apart because some are further along in the process and some are just beginning in the process. If there's only one score on there, it means that they're both, they both felt they were in the same place. Also, within this, you will find next steps on several of them. For instance, let me just load it up here so I can refer to it. If we look at professional learning communities, the first one, you'll see that the next steps was making designated meeting spaces for PLC sessions. This was actually designed this past summer at Jaffrey Grade School. So they now have within their time, their, their meeting times on their six-day schedule. There are two meeting times scheduled and those teams meet at that time in a specific room that has furniture and chairs and so forth, and a new projector set up so that they can have their meetings. They have goals set so far. They have made certain to start looking at the data that they have. And as part of that, in both schools, and they have kind of different schedules at the both schools, and they're both working on the implementation of PLCs. The addition of Ames Web is coming on board. What that is, is that we will end up not doing NWA in the future. And we will be using Ames Web, which is something that the district has used before. It is, where NWA is not a universal screener. It is not appropriate for, for instance, meeting the requirement for dyslexia screening. Rather than continuing to use that assessment as well as Ames Web, as well as some other assessments, we're trying to reduce the number and make sure that we're utilizing the ones that are best equipped for our professional learning communities and our tiered approach to learning. And so that specific tool, we can use from pre-K or kindergarten at least through grade eight. And we'll definitely be utilizing it, implementing it this year at both elementary schools so that we have continuity between the two schools simultaneously. This year, in both schools, there will be a concerted effort in one of these other categories to start to more systematically align our curriculum pre-K all the way through 12, where grade six through 12 is very much in order. There is more work that needs to be done at the elementary. So there is behind-the-scenes work being done right now to make sure that that is all set up so that it is a very collaborative approach for both schools. The next one, I won't go through all of these, but this is just another example, the multi-tiered system of support for behavior and wellness. We know that we've been going and doing that. So you have this multi-tiered system of support for academics and you have this multi-tiered system of support for behavior and wellness. They really mimic each other in the structure of how that is done. Again, we have some very specific pilots going on. A little bit going on here in Ringe, although some of the, the tier-two systems are a little more well-established at the school. At the high school, middle school, they are starting to implement more restorative practices. And they have also changed up how, who does some of the discipline and how it's done in, in some of the grade levels, just to make it work better for the younger learners. And then at JGS, probably the biggest, again, part of that larger change that we've been talking about. They have looked at the Ringe Memorial School approach to doing the support center and have made their own new support center in line with that a little bit more. And then for the district, even though it's housed at Jaffrey Grade School, the implementation, and this is something that we have to continuously monitor and support, the implementation of the program for learners who are a little more highly dysregulated, needing more support, could be out of district placed, those individuals. We do have a school, a, a, a place that is supporting several learners there for this first year. So this is the implementation year of that. You'll hear more about the success or, or the progress of that as we go along. But this is the first month and I think we've had our challenges and we've had some really nice successes. So it's gone about as the way I thought it would go, which is nice. So lots of things going on within these same categories, but they're getting more sophisticated in, in what is happening.
Okay, thank you, Ruben. Are there any questions for the superintendent on this plan and on its update? No? Okay, thank you. So then we want to approve this multi-year plan as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the multi-year plan.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? No, okay, that passes seven zero zero. Very, very good. So now we are on to policy. So now we are on to policy review. And we've got a number of policies in, are ready for second reading and for approval.
So these are all policies that have been brought before the board previously and are open for second reading and it would be great to be able to approve them tonight. The J policies listed are ones that have been worked on for weeks and months in conjunction with parents and admin and advice. They are all updated through the New Hampshire School Board Association and have not been updated by us since two thousand and five. These are all recent, within like the last year, maybe two years. A couple in particular, you'll notice there's very little change in most of them from the New Hampshire School Board Association's reviewed recommendations. Also, these are all pretty much required policies. The JLDB, JLDB suicide prevention laws, we as a board looked at a couple of different policies and a piece of this that we would like to just make sure you're attended to is that it is requiring each school to have a physical person who is designated as a somebody who is a go-to should an adult or child feel that there is somebody at risk, that there is somebody in the school who is trained, someone who is, you know, although all and all staff get trained according to policy, but somebody who's specifically a call person. And that person should be listed on the, I'm recommending on the like phone numbers, here's the numbers of people. And I'm also recommending it not be the principal, that it be another person, you know, to take that authority piece. You know, which is always there, but any kind of feeling of, you know, that higher thing, this is, this is a person you can go to who can go to the principal and and be be be, I don't know how to say it, kind intermediary, somebody who's knowledgeable and can be non-threatening. And so I really like that piece in particular, I think that's very valuable and I appreciate the New Hampshire School Board Association finding that valuable. The JIC student conduct policy has very little changes from New Hampshire School Board, except we updated language saying that the policies and rules should be included in the handbook. It talks about the code of conduct. We wanted something saying behavioral expectations would be added in as well as the age-appropriate rules and regulations. I think those are the two main edits that we wanted on that one. The JICD student discipline process, the items that are highlighted in green are ones the New Hampshire School Board Association changed. We did not make too many edits, but under number four, we wanted to make sure there was some confusion as to how long parents would take before being notified if their student was in like a same-day suspension or an in-house suspension, and there was some fluidity in that, and we wanted to make sure parents were notified with same, within that same school day if there was a scenario like that, so things like that, not, you know, it's just I'm so grateful for the admin and the parents who looked at this and really fine-tuned language, it came out good. This one breaks from our policy tradition of not dealing with too many of the procedural things, and the New Hampshire School Board Association also wrote a memorandum of understanding as a procedure that we would also like to adopt, we do not, I believe, currently have this. We made a few changes, but not many, but I do recommend this as well. And the JLDBA behavior management intervention, if I'm not mistaken, we actually didn't have that. I might be mistaken, but it is priority required by law. We made no changes to that, it is a general form. And says things like student conduct that disrupts classwork, involves disorder or invades the rights of others will not be tolerated and may be caused, so it's spelling out a little more detailed what our expectations are for the students, this is important. I do want to throw in there that there's a school district who is putting forth a policy to the New Hampshire School Board Association, hoping for it to be adopted at that October fourteenth state meeting that I'm interested in watching. It's particularly saying parents should also be held responsible for student behavior. And and it's it's an interesting one to watch, so I'm gonna gonna enjoy the conversations that happen behind that. So that is those policies, the last one on our list is the DIH, which I brought forward last week. This is not currently a policy that we have, it is recommended, not required by New Hampshire School Board Association. But it's titled fraud prevention and fiscal management, and it's simply language that explains we are going to act with due diligence and responsibility with taxpayer money. And I think in our culture and in our climate, this is an excellent thing for us to have in writing. Here is, here is what we are going to make sure we're watching for and we are taking this responsibility very seriously. So I would recommend that the board adopt DIH as well.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Charlie?
Yes, two things. For DIH. Number one, if you read DIH, it only applies to food and beverage and renting someplace outside of the district. It does not apply to lanyards, T-shirts, hats, Santa Claus hats, any of those things. The existing policy does not apply to those. The second thing.
Sorry, I have to stop you, this has nothing to do with teacher appreciation or any, this has nothing to do with, there's no mention of food or any, anything in this DIH, DIH is very, it's separate.
I know it's separate, but the point is you're trying to do away with DIH and replace it with this policy. Is that correct?
No. No, so let me, let me step back for a second, let me step back for a second, yep. DJH is the policy that Leslie was speaking of that we dealt with last week. We have not brought that back to the board yet because the policy committee needs to go back with that and completely revamp it. And so that is completely separate from DIH. Now, DIH deals with money, but it deals specifically with the, with the board saying our district is going to take responsibility and not misappropriate funds. There is nothing to do with anything with DJH, except it's still money, that's the only thing, but this is, this is not taking the place of anything else. This is a policy we do not currently have. We have nothing in our policies saying that we are going to protect people's money. This does, so that's why this is separate on its own. We are, the board, the policy committee will deal with DJH at our policy meeting, that's, this is not, this is different.
Okay, because I misunderstood, because we received this policy, fraud prevention, and were asked to provide comments relative to DJH. So if this doesn't apply, then I think we should take it back to the policy committee as you said we should.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie, for that, and thank you, Lisa, for the clarification. Okay, I have two questions, one. How would you like to approve these as a group or or one by one? Any thoughts from the board? And the second question are the comments of Chris.
Yeah, I guess just addressing if, I don't know if we're still doing comments at this time, but I did have one comment on the suicide prevention, Lisa. It's on section E. Where it looks like I don't think I can hold the microphone at the same time. Yeah, it's on the student identification card section there, Lisa. It looks like those, the footnotes were deleted, is that correct?
The footnote piece, he's talking about JLDB at the bottom, the student identification card section is a state mandated requirement now, so it's not anything that that would completely supersede any policy we have. So that's, that's anything about the student ID as far as it having the suicide prevention line, that's a state mandated requirement now.
Yeah, and I guess my question was with footnote two, it reads, section E is only to apply to school districts that serve any students in grades six through twelve and issue student identification cards. And I guess the way I interpret that is that the intent of the policy is to have this notice on identification cards of students in grades six through twelve only. The way it currently reads, would they be on all, would the statement be on all student identification cards?
I don't know, I guess you guys are going. Yes. We have no power. Okay. The vendor who produces the cards is in charge of this according to New Hampshire state law. We don't, so if you're an adult, you have the motto that we aspire to engage, right? You have the motto on your card. If you're a student, I believe any age, but I will double check. It is the suicide prevention information, but we don't control that anymore because the state has taken control over the back of the card. But it would be Conan High School, it would be Conan Middle High. Alright, so it would still be the old enough child, and just as a side note, our vendor did screw up the SAU staff and some of us got Conan badges, some of us got SAU badges, and some of us got packages as if we're students. So makes you feel young again, but we don't, do not control the back of the cards anymore.
Mine's mine, too.
Yeah, I guess my question is if we have a policy, don't we need to be able to control what's on the back of the cards? She's saying that we don't control what's on the back of the cards, but yet now we're going to prove a policy that dictates what's on the back of the cards. Okay, so even on, I guess, like preschool, kindergarten, that Okay, that was my question, long way to get there, thank you. Oh, K through twelve, yeah. I don't know, do they? I believe that they do. So, so if like kindergarten students, first grade students have the suicide prevention notice on there? I guess that's my, I mean.
It has been six through twelve.
Six through twelve.
Six through twelve has had it.
Yeah. I'm just, I was just asking the question, my my interpretation of this would be, the intent would be that it would be six through twelve, and I think that's kind of developmentally appropriate. If it's on you know, K through five, that might, I think, be an issue for discussion, but if it's just on six through twelve, then I'm okay with that.
And my understanding is that there's four members of this board that have elementary kids, so could you guys go home and check this and just let us know? That would be, that is an important thing. Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the distinction that I want to make is that my understanding with the delete footnote is that anything in those footnotes will no longer exist, meaning that any of those clarifications in two, three, four, those will no longer be part of the policy because they're being deleted. So there is now no specific six through twelve, it's just completely removed. Okay.
Just that the New Hampshire law last October, not the two thousand and twenty-three, but two thousand and twenty-two mandated that student ID cards, grades six through college students must have the nine-eight-eight national suicide prevention lifeline.
Okay, thank you, Rupert. Okay. All right, so are we ready to devote on these policies? Or are there additional questions? Please feel free. And these are important and we've got a bunch of them, so.
Are we splitting them up to approve them or are we approving them all as one?
Well, let's take them one at a time.
Okay.
Okay. So who would like to? Lisa?
DBB.
I'll second.
Lisa, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes seven zero. Next one, Lisa?
I'll make a motion to approve policy DIH.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve JIC. I second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Kim, thank you, Daisy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I make a motion to approve JICD.
Thank you, Daisy.
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Kim. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, that passes seven zero.
I make a motion to approve JICDR.
Thank you, Kim.
I'll second.
Okay, Lisa, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, again, that passes seven zero, zero.
I'll make a motion to approve JLDBA.
Thank you, Christine.
I'll second.
And thank you, Charlie. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven zero. Okay, very good, thank you. And that brings us on to board committee updates. So I would ask anybody who's has had a meeting or has additional information from another source since our last meeting to bring us up to date.
We had an education meeting and it was an update and information on the, basically the first day, first week of school. And everything seems to be going really well in all of them, kids were happy, spirits were up, everybody was super excited to see all the improvements and I think everything was going really well, it was a great meeting. Even the dog attended.
Policy committee needs to reschedule its meeting and we will let Juno know as soon as we have that, we should have a date tonight.
Sorry, also, the education meeting is happening again, I'm opening the calendar, on the twelve at four thirty.
The Wellness Committee met and we met the new food service director, Wanda Kirker, which was awesome, I'm so glad she attended. That in itself was a big improvement over last year. We have the walk to school day planned for October eighteenth with the rain day of October nineteenth. And one thing that the food service director mentioned is something, I don't know what we can do about this, but she definitely felt that kids are not getting adequate time to eat. One of the things she'd like to do is to figure out how to get kids through the lines as quickly as possible.
Uh, one of the things she'd like to do is to figure out how to get kids through the lines as quickly as possible. But she also wants to figure out if there's any way for kids to have a little bit more time to eat. I'm not certain what we can do about that, but I said I'd bring it up.
Thank you, Christine.
I would like to add in that that's such a neat request. Um, if we're going to give quality food, it takes a lot faster to serve that than pizza and chicken nuggets. It, it really does, you know, you're, if you're giving fresh food, it takes longer to prepare and it takes longer to serve and, and that the kids want it, that means the lines are longer because the kids want it. That's wicked cool.
Thank you, Lisa. Very good. The Facilities Committee has not met since last meeting?
Yeah, I can provide an update, uh, the Communications Committee met, uh, last Monday, uh, we hadn't met in a while, so we spent a good portion of the first part of the meeting, just kind of reviewing, uh, efforts underway. I think overall the tone was very positive, uh, and that the committee felt that the staff, the administration have made some, some good strides in, in communicating with kind of all segments of our community. One of the, the major topics of discussion was as far as, uh, parental communication, all of the different systems that we have, and perhaps, you know, some confusion from parents around which modes of communication are to be used for what piece of information, right? We do have a lot of systems, which is great, there's a lot of communication going on. But perhaps some need before we go adding more perhaps to, to make, to simplify and clarify with parents, uh, that's something that was discussed. Another thing which we had, was come over from last time was as a next step to really take a pulse on the community and develop some poll questions to, to drive the efforts of this committee, right? We want to be sure that we're taking the feedback of the community on what we can do better before we set our goals, so that's our next step. Um, we're going to be developing that and then setting our goals based on that data. And I'll say that the last thing that we talked about, and maybe we could you know, discuss for a second here, get some opinions, is that one of the things that I think is lacking is, uh, i- in our plan is, is, you know, in-person communication. We have a lot of, um, you know, communication through technology, through phone. You know, through letters home, through mail, uh, to me, there's a gap there with, uh, in-person communication for, for people to talk face to face, which is, you know, maybe you don't reach as many people, but to me, um, can be more impactful. Uh, so I just wanted to bring up, uh, maybe to the board, I know there's a, we've missed two open houses already, I know that JGS had their open house, RMS had their open house, but the middle high school has an open house in a couple of weeks, I believe it's on the 17th. And I didn't know if that was an opportunity that, you know, maybe the, the board would want to have something there to present or to be available to discuss, I don't know, just kind of a thought there on how to perhaps, um, communicate with our parents, uh, on a topic.
Chris, thank you for that update. Okay.
Just have a quick question, so you had said about your comment, is that just something that's going to be discussed in your, in, in that, that committee? On how, how to, oh, that's, I was like, so now what happens to help that? So, well, it doesn't sound like a scheduling kind of issue, like, how do we fix that? Like, so the kids can eat, like, instead of it just being?
And, and there are kids going back for seconds, which is fantastic, sometimes thirds. There's, uh, staff as well, who are, record numbers of staff are buying meal plans or however they purchased their meals. So there's more demand, which means longer lines. And so part of it is figuring out the system so that kids are getting through quicker. But also, I think, how to, how to carve out the time when kids are actually eating food so that they can actually eat. Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
So, Ruben, do you have any, like, is there something, a way to solve this so kids can, like, I don't know, I feel like it was brought up and now nobody's going to hear it but us, so we have to fix that, kids need to eat.
So I had not heard of that, uh, before tonight, however, I was in the RMS cafeteria working in with the lunch duty uh, this past week. I can't imagine it being us wanting it to be longer, to be honest with you, um, but that's my own initial thought. I would want to talk to the teachers and so forth to find out, um, I mean, it seemed like it was, I mean, it was, everything was very well managed. Um, and the kids, uh, were eating their food, there is some waste. So if, I suppose that if there were some, you know, it was a longer time, then perhaps that might not occur. That's also, you know, with the food that they bring from home as well, it's, it's my, my observation, so if they have like a lunchbox or something like that, lunch, no one has a lunchbox anymore, lunch bag. You know, they'll, they'll eat that and, uh, the JGS, I have not seen as many lunches, so I couldn't speak to that. And the high school seems to have the time it needs and, um, from my observation, I go through it enough to know who's eating, who's not, and how, you know, whether they have the time to eat. Middle school might be where you would have, um, people, I would say, maybe rushing through eating their food because they have the time to get outside um, as well, so I think the time is there, I do think the lines, if I were going to say lines being slow, I think the middle school lines tend to be slower. So that could certainly be the case, um, and I mean, the lines are always going to be slower at the elementary schools when you're helping a lot of children. Who, um, I mean, I think they have fewer, I, I could be wrong, I think they have fewer choices, so that makes it a little faster, but nonetheless, there's a, a lot of work in helping, um, our children who are first kindergarten, second grade, be able to, uh, get the time that they, you know, get through the lines. They got extra cake last week, that was cool.
My turn, so I, having in, in a couple of the schools and I, I was going to say, it would be helpful to go back to the Food Service, say, is there a particular school that they're, that they're thinking of rather than general, because I do look at the high school and how many times they've revamped how they distribute food to make it all really streamlined for people, but that's not the case at the middle school. And, um, and personally, I think that we should be looking at facilities, looking at Sandy and saying, take a look at this space. Are there better ways of, of movement? Um, and, and I think that that's a valid thing to do, I think that little space, they, they don't have the same, like, look at the comparison of what the high school does and how they move through and the, and the way the, the middle school does. That's night and day difference, and so I would really recommend that we ask facilities to please look at the middle school in particular and see if there's ways of, um, opening up, maybe with islands, maybe peninsulas, whatever, I know staff is probably not going to happen for increasing that, but there's got to be a way to build more independence like they did at the high school, so that kids don't have to have that long wait time.
Good, good idea. Allison, did you have a comment you would like to share with us?
Uh, just to speak to that, I know that at Orange Memorial, kindergartners were having a, a hard time. And so we ended up adjusting when we arrived, uh, first graders, that is, we went a little earlier so that kindergartners could come in once first graders were settled and they got five additional minutes. And it sounds like that really solved the problem, at least here at RMS. So it was just a matter of just making some adjustments within a couple of grade level schedules and it seemed to work.
The group that I was with was the kindergarten and first grade. And it seemed to go very well. And, um, Mr. Gallagher, shout out to him, wow. Manages that cafeteria very nicely.
Okay, thank you, Allison, thanks, Ruben. I, okay. I think we are ready for public comments number two. Second, second.
All right, same process as last time, public comment, raise your hand, whether you're in person or remote. If you're remote, that option's at the bottom of your screen somewhere, it's a little hand, you press it, I can then see you. Um, and then you can make a public comment. Uh, first name, last name, town of residence, and, uh, adhere to the policy on the screen.
Uh, while we're waiting to get our our, our public a chance to, to reply, I'd just like to mention that one of our teachers, I hope I'm not out of line, mentioning Susan Lemesho sent a nice, uh, message to Ruben and and to Charlie, saying that she was, uh, that in 42 years of teaching, she had never seen a school superintendent on the playground at recess. And then she did see that just recently, she said, Ruben, you are a presence in our schools and you interact with the learners, the learners will learn who you are at an early stage and this is admirable. I'm so impressed. So, kind regards.
What was not impressive was my chalk drawing. So I hope the rain has washed it away.
Well, we appreciate you making that kind of an impression on our students and our public, so thank you.
No public comments.
Okay, very good, then we're on to board matters, does anybody have a board matter they'd like to share?
Lisa, I guess this is directed towards you, I know you had mentioned in a previous meeting they were thinking of perhaps attending the, um, policy convention, forgive me for maybe getting name wrong, I didn't know if you were still planning on going or uh, I guess I was, a- actually, possibly, but I was, um, I didn't know if you had any thoughts or summary on what was going to be voted on there or, um, you know, I think it's appropriate, I don't know if we have, I don't, I think we, do we have a school board meeting, another school board meeting before that next, uh, before that assembly, I don't think so, I'd just didn't know if you had any thoughts on that that you'd want to share.
I'd be happy to, and, uh, that brings up something that I was curious about, um, we all get an email from New Hampshire School Board Association. And that has the proposed resolutions. And I was listening to another school board meeting in another district and they actually vote on each of them, they read them ahead of time and the board votes on each of them to see whether they would approve or this, or, or not. And so the delegate who goes, goes with the board's voice. So I'm hoping to go, there were three, four, four resolutions I'm looking forward to voting on, but I'm very happy to be the, the board's vo- voice in that. If we want to do that, I think you're right that we have a board, um, we have a board meeting coming up, uh, on the 16th. This is on the 14th though, so we would have to look at it now, so if you're open to it, I think there's seven, but we don't have to. But if you want to do that, or if you just want to read them and send me an email. Um, you could do that too, not as a whole group, but read through the proposals, send me an email of your, of your vision for it, okay? I'd be happy to keep that in mind. I, I will, again, do the will of the board, so this is, you know, it's kind of a cool thing that we can do, have a voice at the New Hampshire level.
One of them, uh, is submitted by a local school district, the Minnetonka Regional School Board. Um, there is, is, uh, supporting legislation that intends to streamline the recruiting, credentialing and hiring of certified staff from other states. This resolution is in support of both the state of New Hampshire credentialing laws as well as the interstate compact and reciprocity between New Hampshire and neighboring states. Uh, this resolution also supports changes to reduce barriers to teachers from other states who wish to transfer retirement savings from their current to the New Hampshire um, system. So, um, I can attest to the difficulties that have occurred in the last three years probably with trying to hire people and get them certified from other states. It used to be that if you were certified in Massachusetts, automatically would transfer, certified in Vermont, automatically would transfer. It is, it has not been that way, there, people have been jumping through hoops, sometimes having to take extra assessments, so, uh, been told that, uh, review of their credent, uh, their, um, college courses, their transcripts, you know, doesn't line up with what the New Hampshire requirements are. It makes no sense when the state of New Hampshire underneath this current administration has actually gone from the number two in the country from the, you know, from the ratings, I guess you could say, to, I think, is it number five or six now? Um, and the state of Massachusetts that continues to be number one, those teachers aren't able to come on over here and have that quick of a process when our schools need individuals, you know, there's a lot of, I, I, I don't know, we all wonder and scratch our heads as to what's going on, but this is a reasonable requi- you know, uh, idea to try to streamline things.
Ruben, thank you for that update and it just points to the fact that there are some important things that are being considered and that we have not been tracking them or paying attention to them, so. Uh, I'd like personally Lisa's suggestion that we all take a look at these seven items and send her our, uh, our, our proxy, if you will, or our vote, our, our opinion on, and I think that we can make this more formal in the future and maybe we should. Charlie?
And Juno also has something to add. Juno also has an addition, when, when you're ready.
Okay, so Juno?
Um, I just wanted to let everybody know that the, um, School Board Association did send out their most recent email about this around 10 o'clock this morning. So you should have all received that, if you did not receive that and you're not receiving the emails, please let me know, I'll get you on the list. If you don't have it right now, let me know and I can forward it to you. Um, but it does have the list of the resolutions and all the other items that will be discussed, so, um, just let me know and I can try to get you that information if you don't already have it.
Charlie, board matter? Yeah, we just had a special board meeting for hiring. And I'm just wondering whether or not we need to, uh, provide Ruben with hiring authority for a while, anyway. Uh, that sounds like a, a good idea, I must admit, trying to get together last week, wondered why we hadn't extended that. So, uh, being that that was not on the agenda, is there any barrier to us, uh, taking that up right now and extending that? No, okay. Charlie, would you like to make a motion to that extent? I'd like to, um, extend the, here, the superintendent's hiring authority uh, for a rolling, uh, four weeks. So that it'll, you know, renew every four weeks automatically unless we stop it.
I'll second the motion.
Daisy, thank you for the second. If there's no further discussion, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, aye. Opposed? None opposed, okay. None opposed. Okay, thank you. All right, I think we are, unless there are any other board matters hanging out there, I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Kim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Daisy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I think that went past seven zero.